The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
The January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I ask our vice chair, Ms. Campbell, to give us our board motto.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regularly agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedure applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District Four.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five. Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Whitehouse, Director, Student Pathways and Assessment, please introduce the individuals that will lead us in the inspirational pledge tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, Reverend Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Tonight, I have three impressive seniors with me who are going to share their inspiration for future plans. But before I do that, I wanted to just talk briefly about why they are here. One of our main goals as a district is not just to educate our students while they're with us, but to help them find their pathway for the future, whether that be employment, enlistment, enrollment, or a combination of those. And one of the ways we provide that support is through our Career Planning Guide, which begins in middle school with interest inventories and then provides important steps each year along the way for our students to explore options and then eventually identify that path. And so tonight, we have three seniors who have done just that and identified their path. They're going to talk a little bit more about it. And we have Isabel Amparo from Bellevue High School, Brand Williams from North Marion High School, and Lucas Sprung from Forest High School. And we're going to start this evening with Isabel, who's going to share about employment.
Good evening. I am Isabel Amparo, representing the Robotics Automation and Design Program at Bellevue High School. Joining the program sophomore year, I had no idea what I wanted to do. But it was, like, early on, I understood the fact that the skills in this program would be the most versatile and the most beneficial for any field that I would decide to pursue later on. The hands-on skills showed me that the things that I was learning inside of the classroom could actually be applied to situations outside of a textbook and in the real world. Being in the RAD program showed me how to develop these hands-on skills and critical thinking. It also showed me how to network with industry leaders and ultimately become a leader myself. These opportunities have led me to choose employment as my E. I hope to pursue a career in engineering technology and, while doing that, further my education and get a bachelor's degree in that. I am extremely grateful for the CTE programs like this in Marion County, giving many opportunities to women in STEM. So on behalf of myself and my peers, I sincerely thank you for these educational opportunities and thank you for your time listening today.
All right, and next up, we have Brand Williams from North Marion High School. And Brand is going to share about enlistment.
Hello, my name is Brand, and I was chosen to represent the enlistment. I've been in JRTC at my high school for all four years. My high school was North Marion. When I first joined the program, I had joined for the fitness aspect of the program. I had no interest in a military career. Right around that same time, I met my great uncle Stan, who was and still is a United States Marine. And I had, like I said, no interest in a military career, but with the inspiration from meeting him, as well as my newfound passion for the JRTC program, I determined that I did want to enlist. I've always thought that serving my country would be an honorable thing to do. So with, like I said, the newfound passion, with the opportunities that the Marine Corps has presented me, as well as a special thanks to North Marion High School's ROTC program, their leadership class, the My Career Shines, I've chosen enlistment, and I am dapped into the Marine Corps.
Thank you, Brand. And last but certainly not least, we have Lucas Sprung from Forest High School, who's going to talk about enrollment and then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, hello, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Lucas Sprung, and I'm representing the Entrepreneurship and Health Academy at Forest High School. I'm speaking on my enrollment today and how CTE has helped me. I joined both academies my sophomore year of high school, and in the Health Academy, I'll be graduating with a fine-tuned resume and EKG certification. With the Entrepreneurship Academy, I'll be graduating with a Small Business Certification and Social Media Strategist Certification also. For my enrollment in college, I plan attending MIT Tulane Auburn Honors College or the University of Florida and continuing to medical school after. The entrepreneurship program has helped me create my own small business called Shorties, which won the 2020 CEP Youth Business Contest and has also helped me create lifetime friends and relationships. Another effect of the CTE academies was helping me be selected as representative for Boy State. Boy State is a mock government program up at the Florida Capitol and is a week-long program, which has became very prestigious with many senators and elected officials going through the program. I was also able to gain confidence in leadership skills, became my school's Future Business Leaders of America President, and create my own club to help students develop their own business. These CTE programs have helped me gain extracurricular activities, which helped me build my resume and leadership experience in high school. My education in high school has been more than textbooks and quizzes. My path has helped me become a leader in my community through service commitment. I've had the opportunity through CTE to have over four hundred hours volunteering at Interfaith Ocala and helping the homeless need in our community. The difference between dreams and nightmares is perception of the moment. To say it's easy to accept the reality would be putting an injustice to the energy and time that I've put in making my aspirations come true. But to let one moment define who I am and stop me from working towards my goals would be the worst thing I could do. Being the best takes an everyday commitment that nothing will stop you from pursuing your goals, because the one time you do take your foot off the gas, someone else who didn't will reach your destination before you. I would like to thank my academy teachers, Sonny Collins and Holly Cunningham, for supporting me and educating me about the medical field. I would especially like to thank Laura LaPaine for supporting me and being like a second mom to me the last few years. Thank you for having me today and giving me the platform to speak tonight. And if everybody could, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Whitehouse, I want to thank those young people. Let's give them a hand for the three Es that they are going to be going in enrollment, enlistment, and employment. We thank all three of them for coming up and they're representative of their class and their peers as well. So thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have Ms. Danielle Livinggood, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Digital Learning. Secondary, please introduce the individuals being recognized as Sunshine State Scholar Nominees.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Reverend Cummings, Board Vice Chair Ms. Campbell, Board Members, Mr. Browning and Ms. Thrower, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Elena Martinez Lopez. I am so excited to showcase six of our juniors this evening. These juniors have all expressed interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. They all have at least, a minimum, of a weighted three point nine GPA. They are all on track to qualify for the Florida Academic Scholars Award. We know that as the Bright Futures Scholarship. They all have at least twenty-five community service hours and are heavily involved with advanced coursework in the dual enrollment APAs or IB programs. And they also have a minimum score of a thirteen hundred on the SAT or a thirty on the ACT. So it's an exciting night to recognize these students. They have all been recommended from their own school principals, and they participated in an essay and were chosen to represent their schools this evening. So I'd like to call them up, and we have a certificate for them. And one student is not able to be here this evening because he's taking advanced coursework at the college this evening. So I'd like to have a few students, don't mind, come up this way, and then we'll stand in front of the board members, and we can take some pictures afterwards. So Macy Fronfeldter from Bellevue High School. Matthew Rapp is at college tonight. Ava Pazuti from Forest High School. I should have stated Matthew Rapp is from Dunellen High School. But now we have Ava Pazuti from Forest High School. Destiny Labato from North Marion High School. Ragav Nander from Vanguard High School. And Victoria Goodrich from Westport High School. And I will hand the certificates out, but I do want to comment that three of these students have been chosen to move on to the state level. And those students are Macy Fronfeldter, Ragav Nander, and Ava Pazuti will move on to the state level. But all six of you make us incredibly proud, and thank you so much for being here this evening. I'm going to turn these, give them certificates, but then if you can turn around so the board members can speak with you.
Ms. Thrower, I'm going to let you start.
Okay. Gosh, that's an honor. Young ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for making our district shine and congratulations on all your accomplishments so far. And I know there's going to be more, so when your travels and your education bring you full circle, hopefully that circle will end back where you began, right here in Marion County, and there'll be some good jobs for you and an even brighter future as adults. So thank you again for everything that you've done to accomplish everything you've accomplished in your young lives so far.
Ms. Thrower?
Yeah, thank you. Well, congratulations. Wow, we've got young adults here that are, you guys are shinier than we were back in the fifties. So you're, huge congratulations to you. And take what you're learning. My advice is take what you're learning, and your limit is the entire world. Go around the world, and even today, you can actually perhaps even think about going into space. So congratulations to you, and you're lighting your future up. So it's just wonderful from my point of view.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. You're going to hear this repeated a few times, but the amazing accomplishments that you've already had thus far, we know that that's a pathway to your future, and we know that all the work that goes into what you've done. So the list of accomplishments that she, that Ms. Livinggood rattled off, didn't go unnoticed, certainly thirteen hundred or thirty on, thirteen hundred on SAT or thirty on ACT, plus three point nine weighted GPA, plus twenty-five hours community service, plus, plus, plus. All of those things that you've done are amazing accomplishments in and of themselves. And for those of you who are being recognized to go on to the state level, we certainly wish you all the best. But we know whenever we see amazing students like yourselves, as well as those three that were here before us, just before you all stood here, we know that whenever we see students like this coming out of Marion County Public Schools, that our future is bright, and you certainly are examples to those that are following you. And I'm certain that those that are following you are watching. And so thank you for being such good examples, and best wishes to you for a wonderful future. And as Ms. Thrower said, we do hope that that future also rounds back into Marion County, and that you come and bring those wonderful smarts that you have right back here in town. Thanks.
Congratulations to each of you individually for your individual accomplishments that you've done, but collectively because you represent some of the best and brightest in Marion County. But I also want to not only congratulate you guys, but I want to congratulate your parents as well, because I'm sure in your families, because they are that supporting cast. They're the ones that are helping you to make sure that you are on that right track. So we want to give them a hand as well as we give you a hand, but we want to encourage you to please continue to do all that you are doing, follow your dreams, go as far as you can go. The earth is not the limit anymore. You can go beyond the earth now. So we just want to, again, congratulate you, and we're going to press that you guys continue to do the right thing as you go forward in your careers. So again, congratulations. And your parents. Yeah, can the parents please stand? Family members of these stars, young stars, let's give them a hand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your congratulatory awards. And so for all of you, you can give them a round of applause. These are our two thousand twenty-one, two thousand two Sunshine State Scholars. So congratulations.
Ms. Jennifer Beck, Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and Digital Learning. Secondary, please introduce the individuals being celebrated for Literacy Week.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, Board Chair Reverend Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. It is my pleasure to join you this evening. This week is Celebrate Literacy Week in the state of Florida. Celebrate Literacy Week is designed to raise awareness and importance of reading and to inspire Florida's students and families to make reading a part of their daily routines. This year's theme is Launch Into Literacy: Blast Off Into New Worlds. With this theme in mind, we are encouraging all schools to participate in reading books in a variety of settings. In fact, on my visit to Bellevue Elementary School yesterday, I had the pleasure of meeting a student and his sister that really were ready to launch into literacy as they both were in their astronaut costumes. Both of their teachers told me how much they love to read, and we know reading is important all throughout the year. One of the ways that we encourage students to read over the winter break was through a digital reading resource called Myon. Over winter break, we hosted the Winter Myon Reading Challenge for all elementary students. Students that read the most minutes in K-2 and in 3-5 were awarded a sweet treat this week, and they were entered in to win one of two grand prizes. To tell us a little bit more about the contest and to introduce some of our winning students, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Aaron Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Good evening, everyone. Our Myon Winter Break Contest focused on the most minutes read by our students. It was broken down into two divisions, one for students in grades three through five and another division for students in kindergarten through second grade. Our students stepped up to this challenge by reading over one hundred thousand minutes and completed almost fifty-five hundred books over winter break. Our top three readers in each division received a bag full of books and other great prizes and had their names entered to win one of two Kindle Fire tablets donated by Myon. Yesterday, Ms. Beck and I had the privilege to travel to four of our schools and meet these six top readers to deliver their well-earned prizes. Tonight, we have a few of those readers joining us who accounted for over five, wait a minute. We had over sixteen thousand minutes read between these students here tonight. I'm excited to introduce to you from Dr. NH Jones, Kieran Matthew. Come on up, Kieran. He had the third most minutes in the entire district with one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven, and he told me earlier this evening his favorite book is Harry Potter because it has so much action and adventure. From Bellevue Elementary, we have Rollins Otieno, who is representing our Blast Off Into Reading theme with his astronaut outfit tonight. He had the most minutes in grades kindergarten through second grade. Go right up front, buddy. He had the most minutes in grades kindergarten through second with one thousand two hundred and eighty-one. And then also from Romeo Elementary, we have two sisters, Kathia and Jennifer Mesa Martinez, who placed first and second overall in the district, and they both have over thirteen thousand minutes read between the two just over winter break. Let's give these kids a round of applause for all their awesome reading.
Mr. Browning, we're going to start with you.
Well, congratulations to you all. I never, I never looked at reading in terms of minutes because I was kind of a slow reader, and I would have gotten extra credit. But wow, you guys are impressive, and the stories. Did you learn stories? Did you learn a lot from your reading? You can, you can just say yes or nod. But I'm sure, yeah, okay, and the lights are hard from up here, but it's so impressive, reading, writing, and arithmetic. And you guys are right into the key ingredient with reading because it will teach you how to learn, and then you'll go the rest of your life learning. And when you get as old as I am, you'll still be reading, and you'll still be learning, and you'll still be using those skills that you're picking up right now. So I am very thrilled with what you're doing, and congratulations on being tops among your peers.
Ms. Thrower?
Thank you. Well, my goodness, young ladies and young gentlemen, how proud we are of you, and isn't it amazing that whatever it is that you really love, you can read about it pretty much anytime you want to? And I heard Harry Potter and with the adventure and all the action, and it makes me think about when I discovered the library in elementary school and where all the horse books were. And that has definitely made my life as good as it is because I got an introduction very young to the things that I loved the most, which were horses. So keep reading everything that you're passionate about, and do your work at school too, and you're going to be great.
Yes, a passion for reading is an amazing thing, and I'm going to beat Chair Cummings to this punch because at the ages that you are, this has a lot to do with your parents also. So kudos to the parents who are certainly encouraging this love of reading among your children. And you represent a lot of other children also that were reading over winter break. And so we know as folks in education that throughout the winter break and the summer break as well, sometimes students tend to slide off on their academics, but whenever you're focusing on it the whole time, you're never going to be wrong in that. And I also have to give a shout out to Master Matthew there because my son told me as I was heading to the school board meeting tonight that you were going to be here because he saw you on the morning show, Dr. NH Jones, today. So a fifth grader was looking up to you because of being on the morning show and how excited he was that you were going to be here before us this evening. But all of you, congratulations. Keep it up. Keep finding things that you love to read. Keep finding things that are, that you are engaged with, and you'll always do well in everything that you do. Congratulations.
Let me get some clarification first. Did you say they did all of this over Christmas break? Listen, I'm going to commend you for not taking a break over Christmas and continuing to read. You could have been playing video games, running around outside, doing a lot of things, but you chose to read throughout your break, and I think that is wonderful that your love for reading kept you busy over the holidays. So again, I congratulate you, as our other board members have said. I congratulate your parents as well, but I also congratulate your teachers and all those instructors that are there in front of you daily that are putting those things in front of you and encouraging, keep reading. I found out that if you start reading at an early age, you'll be a lifelong reader, and it helps you throughout life. So again, congratulations to all of you. I had the opportunity to take, Dr. Gullett and I had the opportunity to take a picture with you guys, so we feel like we were honored to be able to take pictures with such great readers, and congratulations again. Thank you, guys, and congratulations to all of you and your parents again. Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cummings, members of the board. It's always a great evening when we kick off with our amazing and impressive young people, so thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the items C-six-point-one, C-seven-point-one, and C-nine-point-one that have been pulled and placed under discussion. Thank you.
We have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. I need a second. Seconded by Mr. Browning. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December seventh, twenty-twenty-one Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thrower.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section two eight six point zero one one four of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your name for the record and spell your last name. Before you begin speaking, please state your name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to Procedures for Public Comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers for tonight?
Yes, Chair, we have four speakers.
Ms. Kristen Brinkley.
For the record, I am stating my name, Kristen Brinkley, B-R-I-N-K-L-E-Y. Before I get started, I would like to thank -- this time to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to address my concerns. This evening, I come to you not only as a Marion County public school employee, but also as a parent who has had children that have graduated from Marion County schools, a parent who has a child attending Marion County schools, and last but not least, a concerned citizen. It is my understanding that negotiations regarding pay for non-instructional employees will begin in the very near future. While there are times that wage increases and supplements are not feasible, before you say no, I ask that you take the following into consideration. It is no secret that poverty affects education. There are numerous studies that support this statement. We know that children from low-income households are at a greater risk to experience deficits in proper nutrition, educational equity, and the possibility of being homeless. Many current non-instructional staff, myself included, qualify for public assistance programs such as WIC, food stamps, Medicaid, free and reduced lunch, income-restricted housing, Section 8, Light HEAP, which is the low-income home energy and assistance program, and childcare assistance. Interestingly enough, while I do qualify for a USDA home loan under maximum income guidelines, I would be disqualified because I do not meet the minimum income requirement for a program that is to assist in home buying. As a parent with one child, I would need to make $23,000 annually. My current pay rate at a paraprofessional provides me an annual salary of $17,256.36 before taxes. Even if you included this with me working at the Marion County After School Program and the pandemic-related bonus, I still would not qualify. Again, I ask that before you say no, consider the following. Let's break down my salary in a relatable scenario. $17,256.36 divided by 10 equals $1,725.36 monthly. I chose the number 10 as it is representative of the amount of the month most non-instructional employees work. Landlords' property management typically require that you make three times the amount of rent. $1,725.64 divided by 3 is $575.21. I've searched multiple websites, and the least expensive rental I found was a one-bedroom, one-bath, starting at $765, not including utilities. As a reminder, most non-instructional staff are not guaranteed summer employment. So now let's take that same number, $17,256.36, and divide it by 12. That gives you a monthly income of $1,438.3. Take that and divide it by 3, you have $479.34. While you may be able to find rentals at those prices, although unlikely through income-based housing and Section 8 programs, both programs do not have availability. In fact, both have waitlists that can be more than one to two years long, or the waitlist is currently closed. Again, before you say no, consider the following. When employees are not able to financially provide for their family, it creates a dystopic culture within our schools. As with any dystopia, there are feelings of gloom, helplessness, and depression. There is suffering in that due to various forms of poverty, our children will not have the skills to be successful in their chosen paths. Our students will experience an injustice as they will not receive services when positions are vacated or remain unfilled. Last year, my 17-year-old daughter, who was a high school student with no experience, was making $15 an hour working at Chick-fil-A. It was not until I reached my three-year mark and a 25-cent pay increase that I began to make more than her. The difference in our hourly pay between myself and my daughter, 34 cents. This evening standing in front of the board is bittersweet. Before working for Marion County Public Schools, I left the job that I liked to come to a job that I love. Due to financial circumstances and increases in everyday living expenses, two weeks ago, I submitted my resignation as a paraprofessional to take employment elsewhere so that I am able to provide for myself as well as my child. This decision broke my heart. I was in tears with speaking with other staff members at my school who I have grown to love and are now like family. There are so many more things that I would like to share tonight, but I realize that my allotted time is quickly approaching, so I close with the following statement. Before you say no, and that a raise is not possible, ask yourselves, can we afford the cost if we don't? Again, I thank you so much for your time this evening and your consideration in this matter.
Mr. Robert Schmidt.
Good evening, board members.
Hold on, Mr. Schmidt.
Chairman.
Excuse me, hold on. I'm sorry.
If I could get the contact information for that speaker. I'm having trouble hearing with the reverberation.
We'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
I agree with Board Member Browning. We're even having difficulty out here with all the reverberations hearing. I don't know whether anybody can hear me, but certainly.
That wasn't his comment.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, board members. Chairman. My name is Bob Schmidt, S-C-H-M-I-D-T. Tonight, I bring this back to the issue of the one-mill tax because my questions from the workshop on Thursday kind of went unanswered, okay? So I'm gonna drag this back a little bit here. To review, after seven years and over $121 million spent, there should be some quantifiable evidence the impact these programs have had. At this point, you should be able to show specific impact on standard performance metrics. I listened to the support from the community, and there was plenty of it, but not one was there able to discuss anything about the specifics of what the impact was. It was, this is how we spent the money, this is where it went. I even heard one community member allude to the possibility that more money would be better. At the January 6 Administrative Workshop, the question was asked, what a half a mill would look like? At that January 20 Administrative Workshop, the answer provided was based on a spreadsheet. The answer I was looking for was the impact of the students, the staffing, technology, school safety, and other programs. What was the question really was, should have been, what was the programmatic impact of less money? Or even worse, no money, okay? And we never got into those discussions. My expectation was that the board would ask these comprehensive questions and then facilitate some robust discussions on that. I expect the board to ask those questions. If the board is tasking the staff to provide input, well-thought questions with the specificity and clarity are critical to staff so that they can provide comprehensive answers to you and to the community. MCPS is asking the community, that includes property owners as well as renters, a third time to renew a tax that was supposed to be a one-time event. Presentation on January 20 did a great job presenting how the money was being funded and spent. What was missing was the impact of the spending the money had at improving education. Classroom size is a really good thing, but without metrics, how do we know that we've reached the desired level or the necessary level? Maybe we should go lower. How do we know this stuff, okay? I get it, these are hard problems to solve. I don't disagree with that, but that is exactly what we were asking from you. What we want from you is to take a critical look at how funds are allocated and the impact of those allocations. Have we reached a point of diminishing returns? You can't answer that question without metrics and the analysis of those metrics. At the administrative work sessions at the board meeting involving open discussion, I expect robust discussions within the board members. I will paraphrase what was said at the 20th January meeting. Board members have an opportunity for input and discussion at a work session to express their thoughts and questions regarding a topic. On Thursday, I witnessed a board member squelch another board member's discussion mid-sentence. Mr. Chair, leading and facilitating meaningful discussions from all board members on agenda items is the chair's job and not that of another board member. I thought it was an embarrassment to watch that exchange happen. So going forward, when we have these administrative workshops, there are two times that you have -- there's one time that you comment, you get comment from the public. And when you take public comment, you're getting it on the backside of the discussions. So public comment can't take and provide you maybe with guidance of what our interests are. Asking us to comment after you've had all your deliberations is like, you know, shutting the barn door after the horses left the barn. So at some point, I'd like to look at your -- have you look at your policies and see what you can do to take and facilitate a discussion by the public upfront before, you know, before the discussions are all over, so that it might inform you what our thoughts and thought processes are regarding a specific topic. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Mr. Joseph Prohaska.
Good evening, board members and staff. My name is Joe Prohaska, P-R-O-H-A-S-K-A. And I also have brief comments on a couple of agenda items. Before that, I should explain a bit about my background. I moved to Florida a little over a year ago after having lived in California, mainly the San Francisco Bay Area, for decades. For the last decade or so, I taught at a charter public middle school in San Jose. It was the highest-performing middle school in our district, which served a modest, largely immigrant community. My school was also consistently in the top decile of schools in California in terms of its academic performance index, a metric that was used at the time. The University of Southern California mentioned it as one of the top charter middle schools in the state. I became a teacher as a second career for several reasons, but certainly an inspiration was the story of Jaime Escalante, about whom I know a good bit. That story is told, as I'm sure you know, in the movie Stand and Deliver with Edward James Olmos portraying Escalante in an outstanding and accurate way. Anyway, I went in as a math-science guy, which I have been all my life. I came out of those 11 years there more obsessed with teaching reading and literacy skills as what I feel should be the top priority, although math and science are still close to my heart and important. But like Jaime Escalante and like the school I was a part of, my intention was to provide outstanding, inspiring, life-changing education, something I have been passionate about my entire life. For that, it was necessary to make hard decisions, keeping what has worked in the past, trying new things, but refusing to be distracted by the endless fads in education. I am still learning how a member of the public can contribute to local education, and to that end, I have begun to try to understand our K-12 education here in Marion County. I still have a lot to learn. But I have yet to form a clear, full picture of how we are pursuing academic excellence here. I realize that I arrived here in the middle of this terribly destructive and dispiriting pandemic, but I believe it is now time to switch gears and focus the bulk of our energy and attention on how to recover and push forward with academic excellence. I believe that part of your responsibilities is assuring that we are spending our limited funds in the best way to achieve those education objectives. So while I believe I understand the utility and indeed necessity of consent calendars, I am wondering if it is really good practice to have the description of how $127 million is going to be spent as part of a federal grant program. That's a lot of money, and I know we all want to get the most educational impact with each dollar, but just two examples that raise doubts to me, and two examples that seem worth refinement. Regarding Agenda Item 7.1, the ARP ESSER Fund Proposal, it describes the following on page 12, Marion Charter, Activity 1C. Marion Charter School would like to use $1,9554.50 to help pay partial salary of our IPC attendance clerk who tracks student attendance. Now, actually, in my experience, student attendance is something that is a key indicator, especially in these times. What are our goals there? 98%? Are we meeting this? But if that is her partial salary, then I assume that it is for three years, and there is more to the story there. On page 15, Marion Charter, Activity 14C, Marion Charter would like to use $10,020.15 to cover any other items or activities that are necessary for our school. I hope that includes reading, tutoring, et cetera, or other top academic achievement goals. Regarding Agenda Item 8.1, Amendment to the Professional Learning Catalog, there I found it hard to assess whether proposed additional teacher training is worthwhile when the descriptions are vague at best. I was excited to see Reading 40, for example, as something being proposed to be added, but there simply was not enough information about the training to make any guess of its value. Is it a course that optimally contributes to our reading goals for our students by training our teachers? A general question for consideration is whether it would be more appropriate to break these things out from the consent calendar. To me, putting them in that portion of the agenda indicates that they do not merit scrutiny and discussion. I am looking forward to more substantive discourse on the board on the very most important matters, less on other things, which I need not name, which have some importance but not as much, certainly not at the cost of robust discussion and review of educational objectives. Perhaps there is a relentless, ferocious focus on what percentage of our students are reading at or above grade level, for starters, but in my limited time here, I have yet to see it.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening. My name is Melissa Merriweather, M-E-L-I-S-S-A. Merriweather, M-E-R-R-I-W-E-A-T-H-E-R. As an exempt employee, I decline to provide my address. Good evening, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Mr. Browning, Thoreau, Dr. King, I'm sorry, Ms. King, who's not here actually, and Dr. Gullett. It's nice to see you all again. As President of Marion Essential Support Personnel, I would like to first thank the board for your recognition during the January 20 work session. We appreciate your questions and concerns for how the staffing plan and the budget would impact us. We often feel not only forgotten but ignored. Listening to your questions afford the sense of value, which myself and other employees appreciate. Next, I would like to direct your attention towards the idea of the Employee Classification Designation Report, which I have here. I brought copies for you all, a snapshot, but it is my understanding that we cannot present items to the board at this time. So these items are available via the portal, so please do take the time to look into them. I will briefly discuss how the blue section at the top will indicate where the unit is. And, Mr. Browning, this is especially for your behalf because you were not afforded the ability to view this as it was live when we were doing this. There's three columns that categorize the types of employees, whether they are able to 100% telework, must work on-site 100%, or a hybrid, those who can telework and report to work based on the groupings. Once you review this chart, you will notice that most of the employees from the MESP bargaining unit fall into the hybrid category, therefore are able to telework. The fourth column indicates suggested duties for teleworking employees and denotes the single clerk typist who is unable to telework from my bargaining unit. Again, this information is all available on the portal. Again, this information is all available on the portal for administrators, yourself, and other employees to view. Finally, the last column, the Task Force provided a list of potential issues for a partial closure versus those of a full closure. And this document was created for future use. A complete copy of this document and others created by the Task Force for reopening schools is again available via the shared portal. My members are being denied the ability to telework. According to the district and our Human Resources Department, telework continues to be an option afforded to employees based on the employee classification document, as I've mentioned. Additionally, the Marion County Public Schools Resolution 2110 states, and I quote, "Employees cannot apply for uncompensated leave under this resolution unless they are unable to work or telework and all other forms of leave have been exhausted, or they are ineligible for any other form of leave. Employees may also need medical documentation and a medical release to return." Over the months following the expiration of our previous memorandum of understanding, which many of us have, we discuss as an MOU, I want to state that so the public understands the acronyms that we use, this board has denied our request to reinstate COVID leave as Alatwa, Columbia, and Nassau Counties, to name a few, have instated. Since the board adoption of Resolution 2110 on November 1st, 2021, I've been working with the Human Resources Division and individual sites to ensure that the telework option is upheld for employees of the MESP Bargaining Unit. Through this resolution, employees are forced to utilize their sick leave, even when exposure occurs at work, take uncompensated leave if they have exhausted their hours, attempt to telework while sick or caring for sick loved ones as the virus spreads throughout the home, or continue to work to the detriment of themselves, our students, and their coworkers. We bring this issue before the board today to bring awareness to the struggles, as my colleague has, of the MCPS non-instructional employees. I'm sorry, please forgive my voice, it's cracking. This denial of wages cripples my unit of hard-working professionals who have not received a full paycheck since the middle of December and is too widespread an issue to continue managing individually. Handling these cases individually means employees are going unpaid in the meantime. Following this meeting, in the interest of ensuring timely management of the situation, I can orally advise you of the offending sites. Please keep in mind that all employees deserve this issue to be handled proactively rather than retroactively. I would like to mention that, I'm sorry, that on the January 18th report, it was indicated that 301 employees have been directly affected and potentially out of work and possibly pay due to COVID-19. As of January 24th report, there was 266. That is over 500 employees out of work and potentially out of pay. In closing, again, I would like to remind you that all employees deserve this to be handled proactively rather than retroactively. I would like to thank the board for everybody taking the time and also our Human Resources Department for everybody working with us as these issues arise. And I will tell you that some of them have specifically stated things such as, "There is no more teleworking for COVID, you will need to use your sick leave." So please understand that this is not the union coming to cause problems. This is the union coming to protect our employees, the people that we cherish, people who take care of our children. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Merriweather. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, anymore? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C6.1 through C17.2, with the exceptions of Items C6.1, C7.1, and C9.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion? Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
I'll second for discussion, please.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the grant award Marion County Hospital District?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Thorer. Mr. Browning, I understand that you pulled Item C6.1, and you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, and I, I would have liked to have had some discussion on the, on the consent agenda motion, but it's okay, I can, I can cover it here in terms of discussion. The, 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 the general idea of discussion on major issues that are, and I consider major issues, especially when they involve hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is a, an incredibly important item, and it can't be put into a consent agenda from my perspective because it's a time to celebrate. It's an incredibly important situation. $413,050, $400,000 is coming from the, the Hospital District, and very prudent use of the money in those funds, and it's a time to celebrate. This is a really big deal in terms of getting money out toward our primary goal. So that's why I brought it up, that was, that was the biggest reason. The second reason is, there's a, this is a very large item when it comes to how it's implemented, and there's a contract internally, the contract, I'm not going to go through the whole contract, but there's a part that was troubling to me, and that is student information going out to the contractors. Now, it was covered pretty extensively, but it troubles me that, that this information is going out in any regard, and I don't know exactly how to handle it because maybe it's critical that information does go out to a contractor, but I just need assurance, and I think the community needs assurance from both legal and superintendent, that they're really on top of student information going out to a contractor. And it, it, this is sort of in a touchy area, too, where it may be for, for vaping or for smoking or whatever. And, and I just would like to see this be addressed by the board, that we are absolutely sure, we're comfortable with the way the information for, about a student would go out to a private contractor. And Chair, if you would perhaps give an opportunity for the superintendent to address it, I'm sure she's on top of it, but I just want, I want a real, clear understanding in my head that this is, this can't go awry, and then legal as well.
Superintendent, do you have any comments on this?
Certainly, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board Member Browning, for the question. Absolutely, we have, we, we get involved with a number of different contracts, and when they involve data sharing agreements, those are very thoroughly vetted by not only our Technology Department under Mauro Carrillo, but also by Attorney Powers in vetting that from a legal standpoint. So data sharing agreements are always very thoroughly reviewed for content, and we're very protective of the information that we share on behalf of our students with others. And so I could let Attorney Powers speak to the legal aspect of that, but that is thoroughly reviewed.
That is correct. Under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, any personally identifiable information regarding a student is highly protected, and the Legal Department does work closely with Mr. Carrillo in making sure that if any contract requires the sharing of any data regarding a student, not even personally, I mean, not even information regarding specific privacy issues, but even perhaps login information or, or even relatively minor information, if that information is personally identifiable, that it is specifically vetted, that we have an agreement as to what they will have access to. It is limited only to that and the purposes for which that may be used. It is only once such a contractor request has been through that vetting process that, that it's permitted to go forward for board consideration or approval. And if any contractor ever should refuse to comply with a data sharing agreement, they simply won't begin access to be able to, to utilize any of those services, nor will they get our business.
Thank you. And Chair, so I, that, that really helps my concern because I'm not qualified, I'm reading the report, I'm reading the contract, I'm reading the whole thing. And, and I know I've had, I've had people talk to me about this and bring it to my attention, and, and some very astute folks, and they're not competent to handle it. So this, this kind of reassuring information is, I think, critical for our doing our job and, and getting that in the, on the public record that anybody that does business with us and has access to this information needs to be aware that we take it very, very seriously, both from a legal and an operational point of view. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who has a comment?
I'll, I'll take this opportunity. I, I wasn't going to do this, but when I saw the item was pulled, then I am moving my comments up, up to this instead of in board comments. But we recently had a presentation from the Marion County Hospital District to this board, sharing what their strategies are and what they're looking for, and how we have had such a wonderful arrangement working with them with the Fitness and Nutrition in Schools program that they have. We're very grateful for this amazing financial support that they offer to these programs. I'm going to mention right now, because I was going to save it for my board comments also, that we're also sorry for losing Jeremy Roden. That's a part of our consent agenda that we just had. He's been a great asset to this district, and I know he's leaving the district. He's been a coordinator or a worker in the Fitness and Nutrition in Schools. So thank you, Jeremy, for all you've done to help build this program. But also, we're looking forward to continued work with the Marion County Hospital District. And, and I'm grateful for the continued transparency of how our data share agreements are, are set up because understanding this as a grant, just like any other grant, has to have measurable objectives, and you have to prove those objectives have been met through measures, and that's data. And so while we're not sharing individual student identifiers, we do have to share collectively some kind of measure, metrics with how many students are receiving the fitness programs, how many students are receiving in the fans' gardens and being taught the science that they're being taught when they're planting things. And all of those are data, specific numbers, that the Hospital District wants and that from a transparency standpoint, for us to be holding up our end of the bargain on, on the dollars that they're giving us. So while we're grateful for the dollars, and we certainly are, and all of the expansion we've been able to do for that program, I also am of the understanding of why the, the metrics are necessary and, and grateful that our legal team and the team here works so diligently to ensure that we can have that data share agreement so that they can receive what they need, and our students can certainly receive what they need to, to do really well in this program, so.
Thank you.
The process by which Ms. Campbell is, is referring to is called the de-identification of data. It's a randomization or a process by which any data is rendered indistinguishable or identifiable to a particular student. And so in some cases, that allows the collection of metrics information that isn't specific to an individual. However, in keeping with Florida law and federal statutes, there are also questions and items upon which a student simply isn't, isn't permitted to be asked, information that isn't able to be, or required, or even allowed to be collected, even if it were to be de-identified. So there's, great care is taken in ensuring that any data generated and provided to or collected by any vendor of the school district or any partner of the school district is used in an appropriate legal manner.
Ms. Thorer.
Thank you, Chair. I'll say first hats off to our Legal Department and a huge thank you to the Hospital District. It was in my mind to thank them during board comments. Myself, they've been a tremendous partner of ours for quite a few years now. And, and any board member that has the opportunity to get out to our schools and see some of the, just tremendous contributions that they make that directly benefit students, our greenhouses, all of the programs that they support, is well worth your time to get up and, and go see them. And also, on the legal side, it wasn't long ago when there was a data breach that was not our fault, but it certainly could have very adversely affected our students' information. And I guess I won't say the name of the company, but they're, they're well-known, and there's a lot of suspicion around a lot of things they do, but they are big world players. So since that time, our data sharing agreements have become even more stringent, which can hold up the process, actually, of getting contracts approved. And, and that can be a frustration, although I understand why. But in terms of workflow, we're always trying to expedite anything that's going to be of direct benefit to students. But this is certainly a cautionary control that is more than well worth having. So I would rather have some, some hangups in the timeline for contracts and ensure that student data and employee data, whatever is appropriate, is, is well protected. So that's what I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thorer. Mr. Brown.
Yes, so in, in pulling this and bringing it forward, I just want to use it as a, as an example. It's, this organization that's bringing this money forward, it needs to be celebrated, and it needs to be brought forward and not put in to what I, the silent, silent consent agenda. They, I will say that from my experience in funds, these, these people are doing an incredible job with the money that came from the hospital sale, and the stewardship is incredible. I've, I, it's hard for me to overstate the good job they're doing in bringing forward growth of these funds. And it's, I'm just, I'm stunned that a, an organization could do that well in, in the difficult climate that's out there. They're beating a lot of fund managers. And I'm, I, it's just such an opportunity to celebrate, and it goes to our bottom line of teaching and, and student learning. So it's just a, an incredible heartening situation for me to see this kind of high function. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let me give my comment on this. In, in response to what I've heard, the, this item was put into consent agenda not to hide it or not to discourage it, but as a process that we do to move things along. I do believe that it is worth celebrating. It is truly worth celebrating. And typically, one of us would have said it during our board comments, which I intended to do, and I think other board members, based on what they're saying, had also the same intention because the Marion County Hospital District has been a great partner, not just with the Marion County Schools, but throughout the community in doing different things to, to encourage fitness and to encourage wellness. I do want to make one correction. I think someone said $413,000. It's actually $464,950 because we want to celebrate every dollar that they give to this district. So I do thank that, thank them for all that they're doing. I have seen the fans' projects have participated in the, the, the raised beds that they've done at the various schools, and we thank them for it. And we ask them to continue to be a partner within the Marion County School District. As far as the data share agreement, it is our intention, and it always will be our intention as a district, to protect the data of our students and our staff. And I think our school board our school board attorney is making sure that those contracts are done in the appropriate way, so that we are protected and our people are protected. So with that being said, I'm going to ask, are we ready for voting?
Sure.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve grant application, American Rescue Plan, ARP Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Esser Fund?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C 7.1. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, this is, this is way too big to fit under the carpet, and in my private life, every time I see an item go under C, get a C put on it, now that I've learned what a C is, I say, that's under the carpet. Wow, it's not going to be spoken to, and some of these really must be spoken to. This one is probably the biggest I've seen for everyone, everyone out there in Marion County land. We are talking about, now get ready, brace yourself, we're talking about 127,125 and $136. I mean, this is so, is so enormous, that it's just, it calls for a marching band, it's a significant part of our entire budget, and one of the issues associated with it is that it's temporary. It's going to be using, let's see, through 2024. So one of the, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it forward was to get it out in the open and get discussion, like we just had on that last one, that this is, this is enormous, this is a tremendous amount of money, $100 million, $127 million. And so, we're going to do a lot, if you read through it, we're going to do a lot with this, we're going to be hiring, we're going to be expanding, we're going to be dealing with some very, very important things, and I could read through them, but my point is that it's going to include personnel, and we must have a plan, and I would like to hear a plan, as to how we're going to implement in general, and then how we're going to deal with this at the end, because it's like a difficult time for people. At the end of this, we can't just say, hey, we need another COVID, maybe, to get these, get these bucks in, and, sorry, you're going to, you're going to have to be terminated. So I would like to know what the general idea is, and not specifically, but the general idea of what the plan would be, so that we can apply these dollars effectively toward our goal, and then come out of it in 2024. Whole, and, and our employees, our teachers, our paras, our, our drivers, all of the individuals that are involved, and will be hired under this, that they, they don't have to go look for a job, because this is, this is a one-time shot, as I see it. So I'll leave it open to discussion. Those are my comments. It's enormous, and we've got to watch out for people that come in, give us their best, and then boom, we're done with them, because we wouldn't have this money, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other further discussion? No further discussion. Ready for vote. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund 2, HERF 2 Grant, and Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund 3, HERF 3 Grant Programs?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C 9.1. You wish to have further discussion as well?
Yes, this is, thank you, Chair, this is, in the, in the world of the previous item, again, money coming in, this is a small, small little brother, it's only $2 million, 2.8, $3 million when you add the two items together. These, these dollars must be celebrated, and they must be used judiciously, because they're, they're, they're dollars that just come in once. These are COVID-related, and we've got to be very careful, we've got to use them not to just expand things, but we've got to use them to address our teachers. Some of what we've heard tonight, our salaries for our, our bus drivers, and the paras, the teachers, the maintenance people, it's, it's, it's such a big deal when these dollars come in, and they have to be celebrated, they have to be brought forward. I would like to see them, for my part, District 2, I would like to see them be brought forward every time we have something that's, say, in excess of what a person's annual salary would be, maybe $50,000 or $100,000. Some people are in the $30,000 range, if they're a bus driver perhaps, but, but still, we've got to celebrate these things when these dollars come through, and, and I mean no disrespect to anyone that puts it in a consent where it won't be spoken to, but for my part, it must be spoken to. $3 million, is it just too much money to let fly by? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, just for the purpose of discussion, in case the general public is curious to know what we're doing approving a grant for higher education, because this one in particular is for our Marion Technical College, and so that is considered higher education, and so this grant will help us in our career and technical programs at Marion Technical College. It also assists those students who want to further their education at MTC, but may not have the funding to do so, and so there are scholarship opportunities that can be used. And so while this price tag is a little smaller, the program area where it can be used also is very targeted and very specific to those students who are interested in furthering their education at our Marion Technical College. So I just wanted, for a purpose of discussion, to bring that up. That's why this one is very different than the ARPA-ESSER, I'm going to use the acronyms, American Rescue Plan, education, the ARPA-ESSER is very different than this HERF, and the HERF is because it is for higher education, which our Marion Technical College falls into.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Thor.
I'm just thinking about funding, and specifically that we have gotten through the years in response to crisis, back when we were dealing with the Great Recession, we had the ARA funds that came through just in time, but not really, because we had already laid off all of our first and second-year teachers. So that was a very difficult time for our district, but fast forward to now, the big one that was on the consent agenda tonight, the date is 2021 through 2024. Well, it's already 2022, so there's been very robust discussion, many committees, a few of which I sat on, as far as, you know, reopening, and how we would be able to address it next time if we had to shut down again, technology gaps, recovery programs, making sure that six-year-olds aren't being left at home unsupervised and expected to do their work online. It's just been a tornado of details. So even though it landed on the consent agenda tonight, I think it's very important for the community to again, even though it's been explained before, to, to understand that the consent agenda, which may or may not include items that are already on there for discussion, are posted a week in advance, for especially, I would say, in addition to the community, but for each board member, to scrutinize and ask their questions, you know, to legal and, and any appropriate departments, so that when we vote on it, we know what we're voting on, and certainly, you know, celebrate during our public comments. Sometimes we'll overlap each other, but a lot of times, things jump out at us from the consent agenda that are different, just because of what our passions are. So I think it is important for the community to understand that just because something's on a consent agenda, I hope it's not the first time a board member's looked at it, you know, coming here to the table tonight, and when an item gets pulled, the late afternoon before a meeting, before a board meeting, when I looked at the email, there were 15 impacted employees. There's all, that triggers something that a lot of people have to do, where if we're looking at productivity, which we should be in our role, that it seems to me to make much more sense to ask our questions as soon as we get and review each agenda, and then if there's still things that need to be discussed, fine, but I would say that this board in particular has, has done a wonderful job celebrating our successes, being transparent about our challenges. So that's just a perspective coming from, from me, having been part of this COVID crisis from the beginning, and the countless hours staff has spent to try to offset and mitigate so many issues that it's created for our kids. So as we move forward, each two weeks, I would suggest that it, each board member reflect on when they get the agenda, to please give our employees an opportunity, you know, to answer questions prior to the board meeting. That gives them a chance to really get their ducks in a row, you know, with each of us, and have a little bit more in-depth discussion, so that when we're here with the public, we can say what we have to say, and celebrate what we want to celebrate, and continue, you know, as the business meeting that it's designed to be. I'm ready to vote, whenever anyone else is.
Ms. Browning?
Yes, and that makes my point, I appreciate that, Ms. Thor, it, it makes my point, that once they go on a consent agenda, then that creates additional efforts and, and work for everyone, and you've got to, number one, then, go find it, pull it out, and, and just reading, just being aware, is only step number one. That's, that's step number one. It has to be brought to the board for discussion, and without bringing them forward, and it's a little bit of a hostile situation, where, where there's, there's, it's troubling that things are brought forward, and it's not troubling to me. It is the duty that I agreed to in coming to this, coming to this board with the governor's appointment, that we, I would do my very best on each one of these items, in a million-dollar item, or a $100 million item. They, for my part, and this is for my part, they must be left out of that consent, and we should be, just under Robert's rules, we should really dissect the way consent is used, because certainly my consent wasn't there, I, I wouldn't ever be able to celebrate it, and these little technical things, and there's so much to learn. What Ms. Campbell said this evening on the previous items that we discussed, it was very enlightening for me. Now, I need that education, I need that enlightenment, I need that opportunity, I need to hear from the superintendent, I need to hear from legal. So this is incredibly important, and you make my point. I, I just want items, if possible, at some level, say $100,000 for right now, I'd even settle for that, that they're actually brought forward, so we can all hear them. Yes, you can be aware, but you cannot ever look down under the carpet, or in the dumpster, or whatever it is, that this bulk situation of, of consent agenda amounts to, for me, that's for like shoelaces or something, something so mundane, so routine, that it makes no difference at all, really, but technically, it needs to go before the board. Anything in the million-dollar range, it's just automatic. So I appreciate your comments, and that's why discussion is so helpful, from my point of view. Thank you, I'm, I'm ready to vote when, when the rest of the board is. Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays have the same sign. I'll prove unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $16,180. $2,500 to Anthony Elementary School from their business partner, Golden Ocala Golf and Equestrian Club, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,000 to Donella Middle School from Marion County Hospital District. $3,100 to Forest High School from Forest High School Athletic Boosters Incorporated. 360 bags of popcorn valued at $3,780 to Hammett Bourne Elementary School from Double Good. $1,300 to Howard Middle School from Town of Lady Lake. $2,500 to Reddick Call Your Elementary School from their business partner, Golden Ocala Golf and Equestrian Club, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,000 to Reddick Call Your Elementary School from Many Ways to Help and Reddick Church of God. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Primorjan P. Singh, M.D., P.A. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls have the same sign. Pass unanimously. Ms. Thor, can you give us our thanks for tonight?
Absolutely. As always, we can't thank the, the community and all of our supporters of just doing everything we can to make each and every student succeed, for their support, and for their ongoing contributions to our mission of doing just that. Thank you to each and every person who donated.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. The following special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 26, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. The purposes of the special work session is to discuss Neola. The next special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 27, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the special work session is to discuss Neola. Down to board comments. Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez, you have any comments, ma'am?
No, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, any comments?
No, sir. No, sir.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Cummings, members of the board, again. As you saw tonight, we kicked off our evening with, with students, and it is National Literacy Week, and this is a good time to, to again, remember how important literacy is across all content areas. We have a lot of events happening in all of our schools showcasing that, but it's all content areas, and it's a keen focus, and very purposeful in our strategic plan as we focus on elevating and accelerating our student outcomes, for all students, for all of our students. So just want to highlight that, and thank all of the work of all of our team out there, all of our teachers, parent professionals, everyone, principals, that are working so hard to provide those opportunities for our students. And the last comment is, just a reminder that we have our parent partnership event this Saturday. We're excited to offer that opportunity in our community at North Marion High School, starting at 9:00 a.m., and the information is available on our website. We're looking forward to seeing more families out there this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board Member Thor.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Just a couple of things, the first one is, I'm very excited that we are getting closer to having our Here Comes the Bus app, which is not a substitute for having all of our buses on time, you know, morning and evening every single day, but it will certainly be very helpful to, to parents and caregivers to know where that bus is and route, and it just seems a little bit frustrating that it takes so long, especially these days, to get these contracts going, but, but in the end, I know that it's going to be a wonderful thing for our district, and we have some good target dates for the delivery of the hardware that needs to be done, and the installation, and getting that done during the time that the bus isn't needed, which is going to be a trick in itself, and it looks to me like we've got a plan in place now. Thank you, Mr. Viennello, for that, so that we can get this in place just as, as soon as possible, and even soon as possible isn't going to seem soon enough, because it'll likely be either right before or right after. right before or right after spring break. There's definitely going to be some pilot testing that's going to need to happen to make sure that it's all working properly. I think about the kids that we pick up out in the forest and, you know, in the nether regions in Yumattila and everywhere else, and we certainly want to make sure that the signal is working and, and that it's working up to the accuracy that, that we know we need it and, and want it to have. So I'm really, really happy that we're hopefully sooner than later now going to get that really important communication tool in place. And then the other quick thing I wanted to speak to is that I have made this suggestion as, as chair, that perhaps we would want to look at, because there, I guess the, the board still isn't a hundred percent certain about what should go on a consent, consent agenda item and then what shouldn't, and when board members should go to the actual specialist in the department that's bringing forward an agenda item. It's great to discuss it here, and that should never be considered something that is, is thwarted. So once again, I'd like to bring up for everyone's consideration that we could just go ahead and, and not have a consent agenda at all. Just start at eight o'clock in the morning, you know, on a Tuesday, and keep in touch with each staff member who really kind of owns that item because it's their area of expertise, and just, you know, go right through it. I, I know that the last thing any of us as board members want to feel like we're being accused of is putting anything in a dumpster or under a carpet. Good lord. So that was just something that I had brought up a while back, but it, I ran it up the flagpole, but nobody saluted, so we went on. But I'm happy to accommodate, you know, in, in any way possible, while at the same time really emphasizing that, you know, we pay a lot of people a lot of money for a good reason because they're experts in the field, and we should all feel comfortable as board members, you know, to seek them out and get our questions answered. And I sympathize with you, Board Member Browning, because you're, you're not only a new board member, but not having been in the public school realm, I don't think ever. It's got to be overwhelming. So I'm happy to do anything to make sure that we've got a level playing field and we're getting everything said in public because that's what the public deserves.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. Ms. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, that's, I'll just follow that then with my, one of my last items was that I'm, I am truly, really pushing toward exactly what was just suggested, and that unless it's very, very mundane, very routine, and/or a full consent, an actual consent, that means five, and that it goes forward ahead of time so that you're clear that you have five. So it isn't, and it isn't about being hostile toward the board or anything else. It's a, it's a, the idea is to bring it forward so people hear about it, can be aware of it, and there's no, no stigma attached to bringing it forward. It can't be discussed if it's in a consent agenda. The very idea of a consent agenda is zero discussion, and no consent agenda has ever been turned down, ever been voted no. So it's a, it's a given. If it comes out of briefings and it comes out of a workshop in, in terms of a general feeling, no vote, but a general feeling of, wow, I kind of like that, or that's money coming in. Money coming in is just as important to me as money going out. So money coming in is money that'll be available to go out. So we got to talk about those things, at least I do. And I don't really think it'll take a long time, but I'm willing to start and give that a test because I think we can blow right through these things, especially if we just get to rolling on them. Some of them don't take a whole lot, but it would, it would, just, just pick an item. When you have sixteen things, it may be number ten that's very important to someone who is perhaps losing their apartment or something like that. They just, it really resonates with them. So they, they get an opinion, they hear the vote on that particular item, and maybe it's a three-two, maybe it's a four-one, maybe it's a five-zero, and I, it just really, really works. So I'm, I'm for that. And while I may be new at this table, I'm certainly the oldest one here with the most experience in terms of making money and spending money, and that's, and being efficient and a good steward. So I don't, I don't take a backseat in any regard, and I was in the public school system back in the fifties. So actually, in the forties, I started in the, in the late forties in the public school system. So part of it was spent in private, in the Catholic school system, but no, I've been in a public school system for a long time.
You mentioned Catholic.
Yes. So that was that item. Let's see. On a revenue thing, just to bring it up, this idea of Brick City and our ability to have, have bricks, this was in, I didn't pull it out, I, I didn't pull the, the whole item because we are tearing down that school, Reddick, but there's, there's revenue in those bricks. I'm just telling you, there's revenue. Chicago bricks are a big home run. I don't care if they have holes in them. Once you begin to market this, it's a big deal, and I love revenue. And I think you'll get the drift on that if, if you are around me long enough. So I'd, I'd like to see something happening in that world because we have a lot of things that'll be torn down. We've got some down in the Weersdale area, and even on this one, I was, I would, you know, I'm always chasing that revenue. Stanton Weersdale, I, we still don't have it, but it is in work. So people ask me about it. Yes, the safety. Yes, we are at the sixty-five year anniversary. Yes, it has been underserved and under-designated. Every time I drive by one of our schools, I look at the signs, I look at the lights, I look at the whole package, and it's always head and shoulders above one that has not even a stop sign on the road coming in. And, and, and no lights, no, it, it's, it's bad. And so I bring it up on a regular basis, and it must get handled. And any of you that are interested in it, you can get a tour down there, you can, you can just take a look at it if you want to, if you want to get the feel for it. So that's why I bring it up, to keep it in the mind's eye, because we're going to lose that sixty-five year window, anniversary window of when that was put in. New ways to do better, and I'm going, I hope this flows okay, but the new ways to do better, and in targeting old methods, what's really this brought, has really come to light in targeting old, old methods, sometimes, sometimes a department, like say, a public sa, a, a school safety or public relations, sometimes it looks like I might be targeting the individual department, buses, maintenance, HVAC, things like that. It's really not, it, it's never a criticism of the individual. It's always a, an update opportunity for me, and often individuals in their lives are impacted. And I, it, it comes to mind, I'm an aviator, it comes to mind like the old seven-twenty-seven. If, if you're familiar with that, you remember if you looked in the cockpit, there was a navigator, it was a three-man cockpit. Later on, we, aviation changed, avionics changed, and it went to two, two men and, two men or women in the cockpit, two, two crew. But they kept on that third person. Same thing happened in railroads. They kept it on for a long time, the firemen. They, they weren't shoveling coal, they were just there. And the, the idea is that they get lost, their, their income is lost, and, and it's very hard to move on to the next item. One of the things that I want to see, and I, it's really come to my mind and to the community's mind that's contacting me, is in our one mill situation, that we have, we have things here that I am not, like we have a cameraman, I'm looking right at a cameraman. Times have changed, and when you're streaming, uh, uh, streaming an event, I was at an event as speaker last night, and it was being streamed by someone, and, and it was, it just happens. I mean, it just, it's a tripod and a, and an apparatus, and boom, it's out there. And if it can be done, say for thousand, two thousand, we've got these beautiful people that are currently working, and this is, this falls on them like it's a, almost like, whoa, wait a minute, am I losing my job? What's Mr. Browning talking, what's Board Member Browning talking about here? Really, the issue is we've got to keep our eyes open and our, our ears open, and we've got to hire from in, inside, and I was talking about this the last little bit. We've got to, we've got to hire and transfer to make opportunities from inside the, the district. And all people must be protected because as I see things moving along, we're going to be, things are, departments are going to be technologically become obsolete. And what happens to the people that are in those departments? And I want to see it, I want to look ahead of time, I want to be right on top of it, and maybe they can, maybe they can advance their career rather than think of, of, of leaving. Because many of our really talented people can, there's, there's a lot they can do, and they, for one, want to be, want to be effective in our mission, which is teaching children, not just maintaining a fireman status, for example. And, and I, I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just using examples that I see. So that's, and, and speaking of that, the sound system, for me, many of these things were just incredibly muffled. And, and I went through the various speakers that came along. There's a reverberation issue here. Don't know exactly the technical end of it, but I do know we've got a time drop, and, and it just needs to be handled. Now, I may be the weakest because of age in hearing, but I would like to ask the, the audience, we've got people spaced all over. How well can you hear? And I, I noticed Ms. Thoreau's mic is wonderful. It's a home run. I'd get no reverberation out of that one. And if I'm this far back, does that change it? If I'm like this, is that better? Okay, that's good, I'm seeing. Could I see a raise of hands? Is it, is it an acceptable system for you all here in terms of hearing? Okay, I see at least fifty percent. Okay. Well, we'll, I'll just tell you that I'll put my two cents in, and I'll, I'll work with Superintendent, and we'll, we'll do the best we can to stop the reverberation. There is a, a, a time lag sometimes when electrons are moving through a conductor and getting to a speaker, and then they got to fire it up, and it doesn't go along with the lips and with the actual speech. So I have a lot of trouble coming this way. How about board? Do you hear it? Board, have you all had trouble with?
Tonight has been the best night ever.
It has been the best for you.
I can hear very clearly.
And, okay, Ms. Campbell?
I heard people all the way in the back with their hands up saying they could hear it as well, so.
Hearing, hearing the people speak?
Yes. Tonight, I think it's the, the best it's been, but as board members, we do have to remind ourselves to lean forward and enunciate, and if you have a teacher's voice, use it.
Okay, thank you. That'll conclude my, my remarks, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Life check.
Perhaps Reverend Cummings and I haven't had as much an issue with the audio because we're used to speaking into monitors and singing in monitors and used to that, just very minute delay, but that, that's just something those who've been with microphones and speaker systems are, are pretty used to. But I, I can understand the concern that, that you've expressed. I also want to apologize very quickly that, for those of you who in the audience saw me step away really quickly, and those of you who are watching online probably didn't notice that, but if there's ever any doubt of Marion County Public Schools communicating with their parents, please don't doubt. I received two phone calls tonight from Marion County Public Schools, and when I went to look and see what the call was, it answered. And so I had to run away because I couldn't get it to stop talking, and it was the principal at Osceola Middle School telling me something. So my apologies for stepping away for just a moment. And I also wanted to mention that I know we referenced that we do have two Neola work sessions coming up on Wednesday and Thursday, but I also believe we have one on Friday as well, and I don't believe that that date was mentioned. Is that still accurate, that we still have Neola on Friday as well?
As far as needed, I believe, depending on how far we get.
Okay, all right, perfect. So we, we definitely have the two coming up tomorrow morning, starting, and then Thursday, and then the Friday is on our calendars as well in the event that we might need it, and we very well might, based on the dialogue that we've been having thus far. I also wanted to say it was great to see so many people in the room this evening. I know it's been some time since we've been able, well, it's been ever, forever, that we've never been able to see this many people in a board meeting at any given time because of the size of the previous board meeting that we were in, when we would have students and their families, they would have to march in and march out, march in and march out, and it's been great to be able to see as many people as wanted to be in this auditorium this evening. But there's still plenty of room. So anyone out there who might be listening, please come, one come all, to our meetings because we love the engagement and we love seeing faces out there because, especially of our students, it's a great civics opportunity to, I've encouraged some civicus teachers to have students come and actually watch our, our board meetings in person. It's a great civics lesson on how government operates, actually, in the sunshine. Also wanted to mention that there's lots of interest in our legislature to help parents get more engaged. So if there are any parents that are listening or have an interest in getting involved, please know that we always are welcoming you to apply as, to become a volunteer anywhere in our district. You can actually check a little box that says you can volunteer in any school as long as you're approved. That gives you an awesome opportunity to get involved in our schools and possibly even to serve as a substitute in our schools. If you are interested in actually becoming a substitute, we welcome that. I had the opportunity of being in one of our middle schools recently, and a parent, a fellow parent that I know quite well poked her head in the door, and she was substituting next door. And she said she's been doing that one day a week for quite some time. It's a wonderful, enriching opportunity, so any parents out there that want to get more engaged in the schools, please do so, and you can apply to become a volunteer and/or a substitute. Just going back to a few things that Reverend Cummings actually covered in our last work session that I didn't have the opportunity to say because we were just, I was ready to not have comments at that point, but it was a great time to accompany fellow board members at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Events a couple of weekends ago. In that same weekend, we also recognized our Teachers of the Year in the Golden Apple Event, and I want to publicly congratulate Ms. Leah Bender on being named our Teacher of the Year, as well as the five golden apples and the Rookie Teacher of the Year. And we talked some about this being Literacy Week. It's also School Choice Week. So if any current students or private school students or homeschool students, as I was just with some homeschool parents, meeting with our School Choice Office just before this meeting, actually, but if any of those folks have an interest in Marion County Public Schools or a program in Marion County Public Schools, you have an application window from now until January thirty-first. That's when that window closes. So please take every opportunity to learn as much as you can about the school choice options all throughout our district. Tonight, I also wanted to mention a few things in our consent agenda, a few items of note. Our folk, our folks in administration at the school level mean so much to us, and we did have a few administrators that were moving around, and so that's great. But sometimes there are also those at the district level who are leaving us for other, either an upcoming retirement or a new, new job opportunity. I had already mentioned Mr. Roden, working with the hospital district in our fitness, nutrition, and schools and prog, the nutrition, fitness and nutrition in schools program. But I also wanted to mention that we approved, and I'm going to actually say reluctantly, the soon coming retirement of Ms. Susan Johnson, our Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services. I remember meeting with Ms. Johnson when I was, before I was actually on the school board, and I was out meeting with all of the department chairs, and, and she was a supervisor that I met with. I remember talking, one of the questions I asked was, so what's your career plan? What's your succession plan? All of that sort of thing. And she was in drop at that time, and for those of you aren't aware, drop is, you can get in it for five years, and it means that your retirement is soon coming, and, and we, we always don't like to hear that because when you've been a valuable asset into our district for such a long time, I, I don't like it to hear when people go into drop. I understand that they want to go into retirement, but that still doesn't make me happy. So Ms. Johnson, you've done amazing things in our Food and Nutrition Services Program, and we reluctantly, I'm saying reluctantly, approved that in consent agenda, that we're approving your soon coming retirement. Thank you for everything you've done for us, Ms. Johnson. We really appreciate it. Also, in the consent agenda, we approved internal audits for four of our schools, and I continue to be grateful for the good work of our bookkeepers and secretaries and others that worked. and others that worked to make sure we have accurate accounting in all of our school-based funds. We also approved a renewal bid for our fuel purchases. That's a really big one, because you all know what fuel costs are looking like out there. And so that was there, as well as an easement for a future school site in Marion Oaks. So there is a lot, to Mr. Browning's point, there are a lot of items on those consent agendas, but I choose at this point to bring it up in my Board comments, because it's just one of those things that can draw your attention to go back and look at a later time on what we have approved in that consent agenda. For those in winter sport athletes, those winter sport athletes in the middle of their seasons right now, and as well as those middle school basketball teams that started actually this evening, and I missed my son's first game, but I want to wish all of those athletes out there the best. You guys know I'm passionate about our athletes and our athletic programs in our school system, and for the winter sports, and the, the spring tryouts that are coming right now, and spring tryouts are happening actually right now, baseball and softball and volleyball, and all the, boys volleyball, all those things are happening right now, so I wish all those athletes the best. And the final thing that I wanted to bring up this evening, actually, has to do with a little bit of our policy discussions, and I know we will be together at least the next two full days, talking about policy. And, and I'm not certain if this, what I want to bring up actually would fall better under policy, or if it actually would be procedure. So just for the purposes of the Board, just to bring it up, you may have received, we all received an email actually today from our legal department, some questions that I had asked for attorney powers to look into, and to get some more information for us. And what I've been seeing is whenever there, when, when the Board doesn't have policy, or when we currently don't have procedures, there's some room for ambiguity. And then that leaves our schools to actually potentially make decisions separate and apart from each other, and making one decision at one school versus another, and, and how things are handled at different levels. And this actually has to do with the use of students' legal names and their identifications in schools. And the information that we, we received tonight from our legal department, I just asked that my fellow Board members take a look at some of that information. And I welcome the discussion, to see if you feel that there is a need for a policy, or if it's something that we actually would put into, into a procedure. But I do believe it's important for us to openly discuss either/or, because there is some ambiguity right now with, with our, our schools, and even last year with, with the diplomas and, and things, and just how we want to clarify that as a school district. And so if, if we want to have that further discussion, then we could do so potentially in one of our upcoming policy discussions. But that's all I had.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you. Tonight has been a very interesting night, as far as, we started off celebrating our young people. We saw high schoolers, we saw our, our elementary kids, celebrating those accomplishments that they have done. And I, I continue to celebrate the things that they are doing, and the schools that are, are engaged with our kids on a daily basis, our instructors, and all of our staff that are engaging with our young people to make sure that they are able to succeed. And that's, that's our business education, to make sure these kids are succeeding and, and getting educated as best as we can do. And I'm grateful for that, I'm, I'm excited about that. And then we went into public comment. And, and in public comment, I heard some things tonight that we have kind of not addressed, and I'm, I'm just going to go by them to make sure that the people know that I did hear your concerns. I heard from staff members, our staff members, that stated that they are working poor. I heard that from our staff members. I heard how our staff members are saying, they, they, they're working, but they can't even afford to, to do regular things. I heard that. I heard how our staff members are dealing with not being able to have options when it comes to being sent home for COVID, as far as teleworking or hybrid. We've gotten emails, I know we've gotten emails about those types of issues, and I heard you. And I'm sure our other Board members heard you as well. Those things are important. I heard from our community concerning quantifiable evidence in regards to referendum. I heard those, those comments as well. And when I hear those types of comments, when, because you, you're basically, on one hand, you're hearing about a need from our staff, and then on the other hand, we're saying we want quantifiable evidence to prove that there is a need, or what's, what's happening. We heard great presentations last week about the importance of the one mil, and we've seen the evidence of the results, or the impact of the one mil, by seeing certain schools go, grades go up, classroom sizes being in compliance. So there is quantifiable evidence to that. And then I also, in listening tonight, heard us celebrating different funding to our district. I do want to say that our consent agenda item, we approved, we approved a grant application. We approved a grant application from the American Rescue Plan Emergency and our ARP Rescue Relief Fund, for $127,125,136. And then we came back, and we approved a $2.8 million for higher education. This district is doing a tremendous job of making sure that we have the funds, or, or getting grants, or doing the things that we need to do to make sure that our district is providing. Those funds that came from the, the $127 million plus, and the $2.8 million plus, were to help in the time of COVID specifically. That's what it says, to help for COVID relief. I need to state, for the record, that these funds are not reoccurring funds. We can't live off of those funds, and they're temporary. And we need to be mindful of that, that the district is going to go on, in spite of these funds expiring at some point. But we're doing the right thing. We are being good stewards with every dollar that comes into this district. Hats off to our staff for what they do with the funds that come through this district. And as we stated, as we learned, already knew, that a lot of the funds that says this in our $700 million budget, don't always go to public schools. They are pass-through funds. And we have to be mindful of that, and let the, the public know, that just because you see us having a $700 million budget, doesn't mean that all those dollars are being spent in your public school system. Quite a bit of it does not get spent with our schools. So I do want to take my hat off to all those that are working diligently within our district. To the young lady that stated she had to leave because she wasn't making enough money, my hats off to you. But that doesn't help feed you, that doesn't help pay the light bill. To the staff members that are, are at, at home because of COVID, and they have to quarantine, and you don't have the time. My comments don't help you, but I do understand you. And, and I'm sure that there will be further discussions concerning those issues, at least from this Board member. There, there will be further discussion. I won't just pacify the issue and, and, and go by it without acknowledging that I heard you on tonight. We did hear some tonight, as far as, as far as the, the audio visual, I want to give a hats off to them, because this is the best that it's been since we've come into this building. Kevin, you and your crew have done a tremendous job of working out the, the kinks in the system, and it is tremendous about what, the way we can hear. And listen, if, if the system at my church was this good, I think I'd be singing every Sunday. But it's really good. And thank you for, for, for working it out. I knew that there would be some hiccups, because we were moving a large operation to somewhere like this. And I thank the public for being patient with us as we worked through those hiccups. We knew that it would not be perfect on day one, or not even day two. Matter of fact, last week, we really had to, had to, had to reset for a few minutes to get it right. But the thing about, the thing about the professionals, they're going to keep working until they get it right. So I thank our professional team for making sure that they kept working till they got it right. I did too get the email today, Ms. Campbell, in regards to the issue about how we will address students, as far as legal names, and, and whether it be that the name is on their birth certificate, whether it be the name change, or, or what they want to be called, what kids want to be called. I think that, that is a discussion that we definitely must take, especially in this day and age, so that we are right. But we want to make sure that we do it where legal is with us, and that we're, we're judiciously right, not just based on our feelings and our opinions. So we want to be right, so that if we have to go to court, we're going to win. I, I don't like to lose things like that. So, I do, and then as I'm getting ready to close, because I'm not going to talk a long time tonight, we've talked a lot. I think next week, we'll be in Tallahassee for our legislative session, from the second to the fourth. I'm expecting some robust, spirited discussion with our legislators. If the community has things that they think that we need to discuss, that you may think that we're not going to discuss, I encourage you to reach out to us, so that we will take that to the Hill, and we will talk about it with our legislators on next week. I think, Elena, what's the timeframe if someone's not going? When do they have to, the 28th? So if, if there's any of us that's not going, we must let them know by the 28th, if we are not going to go. Just be mindful and mindful that reservations and things need to be canceled. But I'm expecting that it'll be a great session next week. I'm expecting that we will be heard by all of the, our delegates that represent Marion County, our legislative delegates that represent Marion County. So I'm looking forward to that. So with that being said, I'm not going to belabor the hour. I'm grateful for everything that's going on within our district, the positive things. Sometimes we, 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 we don't forget to recognize that there are so many positive things, so many things that are going right within our district. I do still want to encourage our parents and our staff, that yesterday we saw the highest numbers in our COVID, COVID numbers since we've been doing this, the highest. So please, parents, staff, I encourage you to please be safe. Please do what's necessary to keep your children safe. And if you are feeling sick again, or if you are, you know things aren't right, please don't come. Don't go to school, don't, think about the other person, think about the person that's sitting beside you. You may not know their, their health conditions, or their, their health history. And if you come and you're sick, or you've been exposed, or you have COVID, you could be that person's, you could be the death angel for that person. So please, please be considerate of others throughout this time. With that being said, I conclude my comments as far as, for tonight. Elena, where am I? Okay. So, we are at the point where we are at our student disciplinary matters. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board members have received alternative placement list for students through December 16th, 2021. Ms. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted timely requests to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, sir.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve expulsion of students JD 22055, JD 22058, JD 22059, JD 22060, JD 22061, JD 22062E, JD 22064E, JD 22065, JD 22066, JD 22067E, JD 22068, and JD 22077, with educational services through the remainder of 2021, 2022 school year, and the first semester of 2022, 2023 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Any discussion?
Chair, I just wanted to mention, there are 12 students that we are having on this expulsion this evening, but the, the majority of them are in two separate incidents. These are two large campus disruptions and, that occurred, and on two different campuses, two different times. I never like to see this happening, and, and somehow we have to ensure that our students are able to express their anger and frustrations in other ways than what they're doing. So, anything we can do to ensure that our students are not acting out this way, I am open to it.
I, I too, Vice Chair Campbell, concerned, as I've always stated, about the number of expulsions. I, I believe wholeheartedly, I come from the penal system, I believe wholeheartedly that people, there are repercussions for people's actions. I, I just want to make sure that the issue, I, I, I really have an issue with this. I'm just going to tell you why I have issues with, as I say, I come from the penal system. So by me coming to the penal system, individuals are no longer addressed as individuals, they're addressed as numbers. And when I look at this, I, when I look at these lists, I see us giving out those kids their first number. I see that. And so I, 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 I'm going to be working with our Superintendent, our staff, and everyone to make sure that we, we try to prevent kids from getting numbers, because numbers follow them. So, that's my, that's my personal take on that. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 22056, without educational services through the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year, and the first semester of 2022, 2023 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. Any discussion?
Chair, the only thing I'll say here is, anytime we're expelling a student without services, I always have a question. And the team knows I ask questions often of, of expulsions. And our code of conduct says that if we have a student who's already expelled, and acts out in that alternative placement setting in a way that also warrants expulsion, then that leads to an expulsion without services. Again, we need to work on coping mechanisms and ways that we can help our students, that they're not going to act out in these ways that are against our student code of conduct, and frankly, some things that are legal matters as well. So, it, it hurts my heart anytime that we're expelling a student at all, but it certainly hurts my heart even worse, whenever that student's no longer going to receive educational services for the remainder of this school year and the start of next school year. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Just as a reminder, guys, we will be here tomorrow and Thursday, nine o'clock, nine o'clock, for our Neola work sessions. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:38 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.